Would everyone please stand and face the flag and move your head here so we can find and join us? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and in its name just for all. Thank you. Who? So, Jeff, we have no additions or additions to the agenda?
No.
Anyone else have anything they need to add? If not, I would look for approval of the agenda as shown.
I approve.
Brenda?
Second.
And Rebecca, I'm second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Before we go any farther, I'd just like to reinforce that we had, due to scheduling, we have two people that have scheduled their vacations for this time of year. So, we'll be down to our core number of four. So, under scheduled presenters, the robotics team is here to impress us one more year, so Joe?
Yeah, I'm gonna just actually introduce a couple of kids, due to scheduling as well. I normally have twenty-seven kids here, but I have five which are four. But the ones that like to speak. The robotics team is a very student-driven organization, so that's why you're gonna hear from them mostly. I'll probably talk towards the end about a few things that they don't cover. But I'm gonna introduce two of our captains, Tegan Stricker and Samuel Coyle. He will present for you, and then we'll drive the robot around after that. Thanks.
Alright. So, I'm the lead captain this year, and I'm a junior. So, first thing I wanted to do was introduce what FIRST Robotics actually is to you guys. Because it can be very confusing for someone who is new to it. So, FIRST is actually an acronym that stands for For Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology. And its goal is really to get kids involved in and interested in and excited about technology and robotics. And not just get excited about it, but actually get involved and learn how to do it. So, they have the tools and experience to kind of become the next innovators of the future. And it's a really large organization. There are three thousand two hundred teams around the world in all fifty states, twenty-six countries. And right here in Minnesota, there are actually a hundred and ninety teams. So, right there you can see, that is the pit area of a competition. So, every team member has to bring all their stuff and squeeze it into their own pit where they can work on the robot. And then they go out to an arena where they compete. And typically, you will have two alliances of three robots, and you're competing to complete tasks. That give you a certain amount of points in two and a half minutes. And it's a challenge, because they're often challenging tasks. But it's really fun, and you do get a lot of hands-on experience. And it's a really great organization that I've really enjoyed. So then, Samuel Coyle will talk about our personal team makeup.
Yeah, so, this year on our team, we had twenty-seven students participate. And all those twenty-seven, eleven were completely new this entire year. And due to COVID stuff, only eight of us on the team this year actually have been to a physical competition in years past. So, we were a majority of our team hadn't actually gone to a competition before. So, this is made by a bunch of people that have had a lot of experience building a fallout robot before. But thanks to seven mentors who all mentioned by name, we have Mr. Bukai from the high school. We have Dave Henry-Bretton, who's here today. Joe Coyle, right back there. And then we have Brent Breeze, Brandon McDonald, Jasmine Schofield, and Jack Schlitt, who all helped us figure out how to put together a robot, program the robot, fund the robot, and all that great stuff. The students on the team have been arranged from eighth to twelfth grade. And on our team, we sort of separate everyone out into sort of different sub-teams, as we like to call them. The first sub-team is the build team, so they basically put all this together. They did all the CAD-ing and design and stuff like that. The next part, which I'm actually the captain of, is the software team. So, I do all the programming, making sure all the wheels run in the right way and all that stuff. Another part of the robotics team is the electronics. So, anywhere you see any blinking LEDs or wires going, pretty much anywhere, the electronics team's dealt with that. And then the last part is logistics, which is sort of anything that's not on the robot, but still sort of a part of the robotics team. So, this includes communication with sponsors and each other, financing. We actually had a senior this year who joined just to do our financing, and that was great. And then the final part, which is a little odd, is scouting. So, like when we go to competitions, we have them watching other robots to see who's good, who's not so good, who we want on our alliance if we have to pick an alliance. And going off that, this is a very spendy program, so I'm gonna give it over to Tegan to talk about how we got a lot of the money through sponsors.
Yes, so FIRST Robotics, as you can tell, uses some pretty heavy-duty stuff, uses some, a lot of technology-heavy stuff. So, it's really important that we get a lot of sponsors, and that's an extremely important part of FIRST Robotics. Every FIRST team is encouraged to kind of have a business model as well as just building a robot, which is why, one of the reasons it's such a cool program, because it's more than just building a robot. But we have a couple of really important sponsors that are, we really wouldn't be able to have this program without them. Our main one is Gemini. They have contributed so much. They contribute a majority of our funds, they contribute materials. The acrylic on that robot is from Gemini, the design. They have donated a number of the machines in the shop that we use for our robot. They have given us tours, and they've done a lot of support, they've given us demos. So Gemini is a main one, that's a picture of when we went to Gemini. And we also have FlexCraft. We use their materials to build the robot in the pit. It's really convenient, and it's a really great sponsor to have. And Western Digital gives us funds, and the CF Education Foundation is a big one. This year, they have funded the purchase of a powder coat oven, which is really nice, because it helps make all of our metal pieces last longer, stronger. And it's just a really great addition to have. We also have some other sponsors. Two Hundred Waters LLC, US Bank, Cannon Falls Fire Department, Aspen Equipment, Quality One Woodworking, Start Tech Computing, Boston Scientific, and Casey's have all sponsored us in some way. And just from that long list, you can see it takes a lot of work. And it's a great learning experience, but it also just shows the scope of the program, how important having outside support is. Alright, going back to Samuel.
Yeah. Okay, so this, or what I'm gonna talk about next is sort of what we did with our robot this year, sort of what the game was that we had to compete with. So, this year, in early January, the FIRST competition released the game, and they called it Rapid React. And what we had to do is, we have these sort of tennis ball styled balls, but they're sort of blown up. We had to shoot them into a logo, which was that high. And then another one, we can actually fit in here today, that was sort of like eight feet tall. And throughout the course of two minutes, we were supposed to shoot as many of those balls in as possible. The other aspect of the game was, we had to try and climb on bars like this. And at the competition, there'd be another one that's about this low, and there's this one, and then there's two more that were higher. And you're supposed to monkey crawl across them. And then one more thing that we sort of found out at competition, that was sort of like a secret, we're not directly in the rules list, that you could also play defense against other bots. So, go over to the other side and hit them when they're shooting, and prevent them from climbing as much as possible. In Duluth, we were known as a bit of a defensive bot. And then in Cedar Falls, in one of our semifinal matches, we were able to play defense and almost win the match, but not quite. So, going off with a little more with our robot, so we have these wheels here, they can shoot the balls up. And then we grab the balls off the ground here. And then we have a hook that just grabs one bar. And we decided as a team that we wanted to focus more on shooting at the beginning of the year and not focus so much on the monkey bar climbing. So, we can't actually get higher than this far there, but yeah. And then I'll talk a little bit more directly about sort of the results of this year. So, our season started off, not actually with this robot, but way back in November? November-ish with last year's robot. And we went to sort of, they call it a mini mini. And all it was is using last year's robot with last year's game, just to see if, or just to get new members sort of experienced and experience the competition. And that was in Egan this year. They didn't really do any ranking with that, so we just sort of showed up. We showed the new members what it was all about. And then we went, and we had to wait a couple of months till January eighth, where we hosted a kickoff with Red Wings Robotics Team. And that's where we were introduced to the game, and that's sort of the high element, if you see that over there. So, after kickoff, we worked for six, six weeks until we reached what they call Week Zero, which is sort of another mini-competition, or it's just sort of getting you on a field with the actual game elements and seeing what you can do. And that was February nineteenth at Prior Lake, and there's twenty-eight teams that were there competing with us. And finally, we, the next week or two weeks after that, we went to our Duluth Regional from March third to March fifth, where there was fifty-six other teams. And unfortunately, due to a bit of technical difficulty with a bunch of different stuff, sort of all going wrong at once, we placed fifty-second in that regional. Then we came back to Cannon Falls, we worked hard for two weeks, we ironed up pretty much all the kinks. And in Cedar Falls, we, on March twenty-fourth to March twenty-sixth, we competed with forty-six other teams in the University of Northern Iowa. And by the end of the day, we placed tenth. And then the first, what they do is they take the top eight teams and have them pick alliance members. But like the first-place team can pick the third, so alliance members get moved up and stuff. So, we were actually the seventh seeded alliance member going into the finals. And in our quarterfinals match, we played the number-two ranked scene. We upset them, went into semifinals, played a bit of defense, got close to winning. We were about two points off, and that's where our season ended. Then I'll switch this back to Tegan to show more of the long-term effects of the program.
Yes, so, as we've already mentioned, there's a lot more benefits than just competing with a robot. And it's what makes this program so cool. There is a lot of student impact involved. Students not only enjoy the program, but they learn from the program, and they get connections in the STEM community that can really help them out. So, coming from a younger team member, first.
Yeah, so we'll make them sort of, this is Thomas Coyle, this is his second year on the team, right?
Yes, second-year freshman.
And Luke?
I'm Luke Merkey, I've been on the team for two years.
So, first we wanted to give your perspective of what the younger team member has gotten from, out of it, and then I'll tell you what older team member got out of it. So, what's, what's the thing you've learned?
So, I, I've mainly focused on building a climber. And when I got, when we got back to Duluth, I decided that I wanted to build a climber that could get to the third monkey bar. So, I really tried to do that. I was, fell short just a little bit, but I had about a week to build it. So, that's, that's what I did, and I learned that every, if I put my mind to it, I can do whatever I needed to.
So, for me, I focused a little bit more on the software side, but they make it seem like there's these subs teams, and you kind of stick to one. But I really jumped around and learned a whole bunch about building the robot. I mean, I've touched the robot, have, can point at things that I've done on there, as well as help with the software. So, really, it's a team effort, and we've done so much together. And if you need some help on a build thing, but you only got Samuel over here who's software, he'll jump in and help you out with whatever you need. And then also, I focused a lot on scouting, which is a really important part of the game. Because in Cedar Falls, we ended up having to choose our team members for that playoffs. And scouting is a huge thing, because it helps you figure out who you really want to be on your team. And I, we spent, I think we ended up spending probably seven hours scouting down there to get good data. And it's a lot of work, but it's also fun to scout robots, because then you get to focus in on a match and learn a lot about the different robots.
What was your favorite thing?
Oh, my favorite thing was probably in that semifinal matches, was watching my brother go and play defense, because it's a lot of fun to see him try to shut down the robots. And he did pretty good at it, but fell short, but still had a lot of fun.
Yeah, my favorite thing was probably having to fix all the damage that Sam did.
You can do a good job of that.
So, that's definitely something that I can say. Every year, you get more into the program. As an older member, I learned a ton in my first few years. I learned how to do CAD-ing, which is period design, so I used all sorts of software. Now, I can run any machine in that shop confidently, and I can program or make anything on the software confidently. I now know how to program, I have Java experience. I've built parts of that robot, and I've written letters to sponsors. I've done so many things and gotten so much experience out of it. And another great thing is because FIRST is such a connected community, there is a lot of people who work in STEM field, who are at connections in STEM field that I'm now connected to and can give me advice. FIRST itself has a ton of scholarships that are available. I also, you know, just get STEM experience, and that is really great for when you're applying for colleges or when you're trying to figure out what you want to do. Because that hands-on experience is so much more valuable to figuring out like what you actually enjoy than just sitting in a classroom and listening to other people talk about it. And the other thing is, you get a lot of leadership experience. As you said, it's a very student-led program. So, as lead captain, I did a lot of leadership. I had to organize things, figure out what we needed to prioritize, I had to figure out what people needed, give them that. It's, it's a lot of leadership, and it's really great experience, because there's a lot of really great support to help you along the way. And then the final thing that I want to touch on is actually a term that FIRST has coined called cooperition, which is competition and cooperation. And it really kind of shows how you're trying to compete, and you're trying to do the best that you can. You want to compete with other teams that are also at their best. So, it's really kind of, you want to support other teams, and you want to support everyone and really help them whenever you can. So, in the end, when you actually are competing, you're competing fiercely, but you're competing fairly. And everyone can feel good about the performance that they put in, which is a really great lesson to learn. Alright, so, other than student impact, we also have community outreach. So, as far as community outreach goes, one of the things that we do in the summer is a Lego camp for the elementary students. So, for a week, we have everyone come in here and play with the Lego, Lego robotics kits. And they have challenges that they have to do, like going through a maze, or picking something up and putting it somewhere else. And it's a lot smaller scale than this big robot, but it really kind of gets them interested, and it's a lot of fun. And we get to kind of get elementary kids interested in it for later. We also do a lot of demonstrations. We're actually going down to the elementary school to do an annual demonstration in May. And the students always love that, because they get to see the robot shooting balls and driving around. Then in June, we're going to the library, do a demonstration there. And we also do a lot of sponsored demos. So, this past year, we went to Gemini and gave a presentation. And over COVID, that kind of shut down demos a little bit, but we're starting to get more of those and open it back up. And it really does show, we really try to connect with community and show how STEM is impacting us and how STEM can impact them. And how it's, community outreach is also a very important part of FIRST Robotics. Alright, so now I'm gonna hand it over to, back to Joe, who's gonna give some final words.
Yeah, I'm gonna just give two things that I want to talk about before I let Samuel drive the robot around. One is, in past years, I haven't been able to say this, but the program itself now has alumni, which is awesome. We've been doing this for seven years. And that alumni network is, of students from here is awesome, because they actually come back. They get them back during J-term. They usually during kickoff come up with a crazy idea for a design for a robot, but they also connect with these guys and talk about their college experience and now even job experience. We have several Gemini engineer, or Gemini Scholarship winners that came back. We have another one on our team this year that got the Gemini Scholarship. So, it's one of those pathways that really work for us. We have a Tesla engineer, we have an Air Force cadet, we have, Parker is an automation engineer. Couple of students are gonna be graduating and getting jobs, and they all come back, because they love this program. They know what they built originally, because a lot of them are original members, and they want to come back and support the team. So, that's the one thing I want to bring up. And then the other thing I want to bring up is, I always like to tell at least one story about, Tegan talked about cooperition, and there's also gracious professionalism are the two trademarks of FIRST. It is the idea that you want to compete, but you also want to help other teams to make sure that they're on the field when they need to be. And I was down in Cedar Falls, I always try and volunteer once. Down on the field, working with teams, talking to other teams, I get to know a lot of other teams. There was a team that was kind of like a rookie team like ours, because they didn't have very many students. And they brought a robot that really struggled on the field, they could tell was struggling on the field. And talked to them a little bit, worked with some team members here actually, and told them what was going on. Sent the kids over to their pit area and helped them put on some flywheels onto their shooter, bolting them on, kind of helping this other team out quite a bit. And this is in the middle of us trying to compete and do well in this competition. And it just made me feel real good. And so then, fast forward about two matches later, that same team now is out on the field, right? And normally, they had been just kind of driving around, because teams that can't shoot, can't climb, they sort of just drive around and distract everybody. This team, during the two minutes and thirty seconds of the match, they got up, they were able to pick up a ball because of what our team had helped them with. They were able to shoot a ball into the top thing. And the funniest part about the whole thing is I'm on the field watching this, and they literally dropped their controllers and just went crazy in the middle of a match, because they thought it was the coolest thing ever. And for me, it was like them, you know, winning their playoffs. That was their, their one shining moment or whatever. And I think it was because of our team members that helped them do that. So, it's those kind of examples of things that this program really brings out in kids, that competition. So, that's my last story. I'm gonna let Samuel drive the robot a little bit, show you what you can do. Tegan, you're gonna help too? Or Thomas is gonna? So, the way they drive this robot, it's got a joystick that's actually gonna control the movement of the robot. And then Thomas has an Xbox controller that will control intake and output of wood balls that are in here, the shooter wheels, the climbers, it's got everything on the Xbox controller. So, it does take a little bit of teamwork. Katie Lochner, her son was actually the game operator down in Cedar Falls and up in Duluth too. But Thomas can take, take down my role. Thanks. You guys kick them back out? During a match, Tom is driving much faster than us, he's living on a dam. Also during a match, he's got a set for his, he'll shoot it like he just did, or which we, most of the time during matches, we shoot high. The ceiling's up quite high up in here. We just increase RPMs with that shooter, and it will take all the ceiling height that you want to do. So, if you want, first start, you can have it. So, this robot right now, I'm sure you might have other questions, but we maxed out the weight on it. The weight limitation is a hundred and twenty-five pounds. We did that because we want to play defense. That doesn't include the bumpers or the batteries, so battery adds about fourteen pounds, the bumpers add another ten pounds. So, we're sitting at about a hundred and fifty pounds that just got lifted off the ground with that winch. Okay. Any questions? Any questions? Or anybody want to drive it?
I just had a question, it's for, for the kids. You know, as far as being in the program for a couple of years, can you speak to how it's kind of developed your thought process to further education?
I'll go first. Okay, so, I think that's really cool, because it has had a lot on combined thought process for education. I kind of love everything, I just like learning, I think science is super cool. So, you know, I was one of those kids that was like, I have no idea what I want to do. But then, I kind of got into this program, and I saw all of the cool things that they were doing, kind of problem-solving, doing hands-on stuff, using so many different aspects of science in one thing. And I was like, that is something that I really enjoy, that I really want to do. And it kind of pushed me to decide that now I want to go to school for engineering. Now, I'm not sure what type of engineering yet, because there is a lot. But engineering is a direction that I can take, and when I get to college and do even more hands-on stuff, I'll pick which direction. But it's really because of all the hands-on things that I got to do in this program and not just sitting in a classroom, that really kind of gave me the experience of what working in STEM would be like, and what different types of STEM would be like, which was really valuable to me.
Oh, I'll go next. So, I'm sort of a little different than Tegan. Where Tegan went into the program loving everything. I sort of, when I joined the program, had a great love for mathematics and computer science. So, when I joined the team, I immediately joined the software team, started doing programming and stuff like that, and got hands-on experience right away. One of the biggest things that was really cool for me was, in my math class, there's a lot of cool concepts that get thrown at you day after day, but it's always sort of theoretical, or sort of like, it works, and it works because of this. And that's cool, but you don't see how it applies to the real world. But with robotics, I'm able to see, I can use trigonometry, I can use geometry. I use all that stuff all the time when I'm programming the robot, so, yeah.
Well, I'm a freshman, so I'm not thinking too much out there, but it's helped me, because you get so much experience, especially when you're on your younger years at the team. Not everybody comes in knowing immediately what they're gonna do. So oftentimes, kids like to jump around, and they really find a spot that really sticks with them. I mean, some kids will come in and they'll try builds, and they're like, that's not really my thing. So, they'll join programming, and they'll get, really get interested in that. And I think that's probably a big thing, is that you really get to find your spot, whereas, and you can move around to find where you want to be.
So, kind of like Sam, I kind of grappled on to knowing that I wanted to build the robot and design it. So, that's, that's what I've been doing for the last two years. And I know sometime after I graduate, since I'm a freshman, I would, I would like to do some type of engineering, to figure out and design how things work and be able to take them apart and put them back together.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
More of a comment, I'm really impressed with your leadership ability as a group and your coordination of eight to twelve-grade kids. You know, it isn't, it isn't based on your age, and you might think of an eighth grader joining up with a ninth grader and say, gosh, not old enough, but everybody's involved. You know, it should be a source of pride for our community, and for you as well. Joe and Dave, I think you've been on here since day one. Joe and Dave, I think you've been on here since day one. And you deserve a great deal of credit for at least hurting the kids in the right direction as you step back and let them do their thing. So very impressive.
I know I echo those comments as well. Just been very impressed with this program, so.
And congratulations on your, you know, figuring out what you need to do and taking it from second to last place to second to first place. That's great. Good way to end the year.
Anyone else? Thanks again for your time. Nice presentation.
So, we're gonna take a couple minute break. Is that right?
Yes. Let's take five minutes and allow them to tear down the menu too. And we'll be back just very shortly.
If you guys want to come up and peek at the robot while I tear the rest of the stuff down, you can ask them questions about the robot if you want to.
Okay.
Reports in communication next on our list. I don't see a student rep here, but does anyone have any committee assignments they'd like to speak to?
GCED met and I was there for Katie. And I just want to say we received a presentation about all of the work that the special ed team has done across the co-op. And it was very impressive with what they've done with COVID, the number of meetings with students and families and sort of going through the whole process of when they went to distance learning and sort of now we're kind of cycling back to a new normal. So I just want to say it was very impressive and I don't think, you know, we knew kind of what was being done, but I didn't really fully understand the full scope of what that took. So it was very impressive. So a special thank you for our special education team. That's the one, that's the only report I had.
Anyone else?
I'll just mention this, the F Foundation, they met on the 17th. Oh, that was in March, I guess was the last time. So their auction is coming up on April 23rd and that is at Mill Street this year. So put that on your calendars. It's usually a very fun event and lots of donations and fun things to do then.
Okay. No other committee meetings? No. Okay. We'll move down to administrative reports. Elementary school has a handout or an attachment. You see that? If you have any questions, please direct them toward the principal. Middle school, high school and technology, same. There's an internal report here that you can take a look at. Community ed and activities, Reed, you're here.
Yep. I got a few things just to update everybody. State speech coming up, April 23rd. We are sending 13 participants to state speech at Eastview High School on Saturday, April 23rd. So congratulations to them. I've been working on a lot of our projects at the gym as well as auditorium for that outside piece, meeting with a lot of different vendors. Once I have those finalized, taken care of, I'll make sure that I get you a copy of all of that, what that design stuff will look like. Canaan Kids Summer Registration was released last Thursday. We've had 25 sign-ups thus far and Tammy is expecting somewhere close to 150. So we'd be busy there. Preschool registration went out April 1st. We already have 37 registrations for that. As you know, with spring sports, I've been busy rescheduling a lot of games already. So today would have been a nice day to play. The rest of this week doesn't sound all that pleasing, but we'll be busy for the end of April and certainly the first part of May as well. Lastly, summer roshers, talking with Afton, traditionally have gone out the first part or first week of May. We're looking at trying to get those out here towards the end of last, or excuse me, the end of next week. So we're going to try to get those out a little bit sooner. Just to get those details out, we are getting some calls from some parents and some community members wanting to see what's going to be offered. Other than that, I can take any questions?
Questions for Reed? Okay. Head of Operations, Adam, I think David has something in here as well. So let you take a look at it. If you have any questions, you can either reach out to him or you have to reach out to him directly. Superintendent's report.
Yep. I just have a couple of updates. Really nothing new on the COVID front. We still have a few cases going on here and there, but nothing too alarming. The number didn't study, I would say, but nothing, again, too alarming. On the construction side of items, for a couple of different areas, we got our summer projects that we normally have coming up. I believe we are waiting on some finalization of that gym facelift that we talked about that wasn't part of the bond proceeds, but it'll still be happening this summer. Reed will hopefully have a presentation here in the second board meeting in April or in May. And we can give an update on that. And then obviously tonight, we are finalizing the sale of the bonds that went through today. We've already had our first project oversight committee meeting where we met with different teams of teachers and employees in the areas that we're doing work in to start the design process. That happened a couple of weeks ago. We're also looking at getting bid specs ready to go out for getting our CCC roof done this summer so we can mitigate some of the water issues. That's pretty much all I have at this point unless you have questions.
Question for Mr. Sampson. Okay. Moving on. Next is public input. Comments are welcome from students, residents of the district, taxpayers, people with children in the district and employees of the district that must relate to the school business and not exceed five minutes. The board cannot engage in discussion during the comment period, but will take the information and find answers if that is appropriate. Due to data privacy concerns, a speaker may not address criticism toward an individual district employee during public input. Individual complaints should be handled privately with the building administrators and/or the superintendent. As part of the board protocol, it is unacceptable for any speaker to slander or engage in character assassinations at a public board meeting. Does anyone wish to speak to the district? Mark?
Mark Lund, taxpayer. Curriculum committee is supposed to meet on Tuesday next week. I'm wondering where the public can review the social studies books that they're considering? It's my first question to you. Second point of law is curriculum committee is supposed to be two-thirds of community members. Currently, your committee does not meet the requirements of the law. And so I'm wondering when, Mr. Chairperson, you're going to get that committee in line with the law? As you've said in the past, you support compliance with the law. So, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Okay. We'll close that session. Next page, action items. We have no old business under new business. Consideration approved resolution relating to $7,985,000 general obligation school building bonds, series 2022A, authorizing issuance, awarding sale, prescribing the form and details and providing for the payment thereof. Jeff or Jeff?
Yes, we have Jeff Sealy from Ellers Financial, our financial advisors here to talk about the bond sale.
Great. Pleasure to be with you. And we have some good news to bring to you. Of course, this is almost the final step in issuing the bonds. This is when we took the bids on the bonds this morning. And tonight you have a resolution to award the sale of those bonds. So I'm going to, we gave a sale day report that has a bunch of details. I'm going to highlight some of it. So obviously, these were bonds that were approved at your election in February. $7,985,000. And prior to the election, we estimated an interest, a true interest cost of 2.85. Now, at that point, that was probably three quarters percent cushioned, just in case there was some increase in rates. Now, we've all been hearing about these rate increases. And it basically used up all the cushion, but it came in just a touch over to 2.85 at 2.89. So very, very close. And because of that, we were able to bring it in at the tax estimates that we projected and you received a premium, which means you're going to get about $178,000 more for the project, which is important because we're hearing about a lot of projects coming in over bid. Now, that isn't a huge number, but it is, you know, between the contingencies that the contractor has built into your budget and this gives you a little bit of cushion. So to highlight the sale day report, and I think you'll have this, the low bid, you got seven bids. Piper Sandler of Minneapolis was the winning bid. Now, there was a bit of a spread between low bid and high bid, which is probably normal with the volatility of rates right now, at just under 2.9, all the way up to 3.23. So the difference between low bid and high bid was $355,000 in added interest costs. And you can see the bid results on the attachment page one. Piper Sandler was the winning bid. Now, when you look at these, you're going to see two rates. One's called a rate, one's a re-offering yield, and we only provide it on the winning bidder because the rest is irrelevant. So each principal payment carries its own interest rate, unlike a home mortgage that the interest rate applies across the board. So the principal payment 25 had a rate of 4%. However, part of that premium, they paid you money in order to get a 4%. So by the offset, the yield, which is the interest that's accrued less the amount of money they gave you upfront, was 2.15. So that's what the yield is. Now, why do they give you money upfront? Because the rates have been extremely low for quite a few years and hence it's a little harder to sell the investments with low interest market or interest rates. So investors want a higher rate of return, but obviously they want higher than market rate of return because rates are so low. So what they do is they pay you more to get a higher rate of return. Now, why would they do that? It just seems like, you know, switching money. But the rate of return is tax exempt. So they get that extra benefit of 37% tax exemption status on the accrued interest versus the, and that's why they pay the money upfront. So anyway, you did receive a premium and you can see anywhere the rate was different versus the yield, they paid you more for that rate. So you had Northland of Minneapolis also bid and you can see the cover was 3%, which is the second place bid versus 2.89. That's a pretty good spread between first and second place. And then you got Verdo of Milwaukee, the Baker Group of Oklahoma City, Raymond James of Memphis, Stifel Minneapolis and FHN out of Memphis. So you had a lot of interest. The last couple of bonds that I sold had four to five bidders. So seven with a lot of interest on your, on your bonds. And part of it is you obviously have a very good rating. I did include the rating report for anyone who has trouble sleeping at night. You can move that to bed. It's at the very end. On attachments, page four, that's your principal and interest payments. Now, those first two payments, if you look at the next page, page five, we're actually taking some of the bond proceeds and applying them towards that first principal or interest payment. The reason we do that is because your election was after the tax levy cycle. You had to certify your levy before you had authorization issuing these. So you need the money somehow to make the first interest payment. So that comes out of the bond proceeds. And then we have about $101,000 of bond proceeds for that second payment, the 823. That is, so you didn't see a spike one year in tax impact and then a drop and leveling off. And basically, your tax rate is going to be leveled through, you can see that just visually on, skip to page seven, attachments, page seven. You can see that your overall debt tax structure is going to be leveled through taxable 2031. Then you're going to have a drop down and then leveled through 2039. These are an 18-year bond with 17 annual tax levies. And that means that after it drops or as you're coming up to that drop, a lot of schools like planning for any other capital needs that they need. Because when you have a drop, it's always a good time to bring something to the voters so it isn't just piling on existing. Some's going away at the same time. So keep that in mind. And then, of course, the tax impact on page eight, that is the pre-election. And you can see it is identical to the post-election. So we're happy about that. When rates are staying really low and we put cushions in, we usually come in under. But everyone's heard what happened the last six, seven, eight weeks with rates. So, oops, sorry. And then the rating report. So you have a resolution? If anyone has any questions about that, that is awarding the sale to the winning bidder.
I guess we could keep it local, too.
Yes, yes.
Any other questions? Or Jeff? If not, I will look for a motion to approve a motion to the resolution meeting. Brenda, did you make that motion?
Yeah, I made the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rebecca. Any other discussions? Rebecca, would you read the resolution, please?
Yeah.
Wherever that happens to land.
Yeah.
Have it up on the screen if you wish to read that.
I would love to do that. Yeah, right here. I, the undersigned, being duly qualified and acting recording officer of the public corporation issuing the bonds referred in the title of this certificate, certify that the documents attached hereto, as described above, have been carefully compared with the original records of said corporation in my legal custody, from which they have been transcribed. That said documents are correct and complete transcript of the minutes of a meeting of the governing body of said corporation and correct and complete copies of all resolutions and other actions taken and of all documents approved by the governing body at said meeting so far as they relate to said bonds. And that said meeting was duly held by governing, by the governing body at the time and place and was attended throughout, throughout by the members indicated above pursuant to call and notice of such meeting given as required by law. Special?
Okay. So yes, vote.
Sorry, the resolution is actually related to that.
Oh.
The resolution is the, is the capitol?
Yep. You can read that if you would.
You read the.
I was, as I was reading it, I did, I did question it. Thank you.
You're doing so well, I didn't want to interrupt.
Resolution relating to the $7,985,000 general obligation school building bond series 2022A, authorizing issuance, awarding sale, prescribing the form and details and providing for the payment thereof. Is that covered?
That's it.
Got you covered now.
It's been a Monday. All right. We'll call on Bob?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Rebecca? Yes? Bill?
Epstein.
That passes by a 3-0 vote with Bill Epstein as part of his employment.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the.
You're welcome.
Jeff, do you have those documents?
Yes, I have the one I needed and then the rest go back to Andrea. We talked about it, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Number two is consideration to approve the Glenn and Louise Schultz Scholarship, one award of $1,000.
Yes, Schultz family has graciously awarded a scholarship for $1,000 in a woodwork and approval of this scholarship.
Who is a longtime educator, elementary school educator in their district, thanks to them. Look for a motion to approve the scholarship.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Put down the motion. Bill on the second. Any other discussion?
Thank you.
All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Thanks to the Schultz. Consideration to approve the Snap Fitness Gabrielle Horner scholarship, one award of $1,500.
Yes, the family of Gabrielle Horner, the owners of Snap Fitness, generously given a $1,500 scholarship as well.
Okay. Motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Rebecca, on the motion, second.
Second.
Seconded by Bill. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Again, a big thanks to the family. Consideration to approve a 10-cent meal increase for the 2223 school year. 2223 prices will be breakfast at 2:10 for the pre-K through 12, lunch at $3 from 6 to 12 and $2.90 for pre-K to 12.
All right, um, at this point, school lunches are slated to not be free starting next year the way they have been. Uh, that decision is still forthcoming and may change, but we do need to pass an increase as we have in previous years, uh, each year. But if that does change, I will get back to you guys on, uh, the legislation that's currently coming through right now. So at this point, we are recommending a 10-cent increase to the meal prices.
Look for a motion to approve the 10-cent increase.
What did you say about next year?
So next year, at this point, we are planning on that lunches and breakfast will not be free.
Not be free.
Right. Um, but there is legislation that's working its way through that it could be free.
Okay.
And so we're just being preemptive about taking care of this business and then if they act at the last minute, we have this very best.
Okay.
I'll move to approve.
Brenda on the motion, seconded by...
I'll second.
Rebecca? Any other discussion?
Yeah, I guess, uh, I have a little concern considering that we're going from free to an increased rate. It's understandable that food has gone up and prices have gone up, but, um, I have a little concern just overall, the whole district. But it makes sense, I, I understand the positioning of it at this point, but, um, we have to be probably looking at free and reduced, uh, push application.
I would echo Bill's concerns, I think he took the words out of my mouth, that was my hesitancy. It's a realistic increase, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor for the 10-cent increase. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. We do have this every year. Every time we have an increase, you know, if it's not an increase in, in extracurricular, it's, it's here. We fully understand that our community gets hit in a lot of different ways.
Yeah, it's just the whole idea that you get accustomed to free and your, your budget is being used somewhere else and all of a sudden, no, you gotta come back to what used to be, so, you know, just to be, be aware of.
Undisputedly, there's, there's different options being presented right now, anywhere from free to partial funding, you know, or to no funding.
It just doesn't fall in our lap as a school district. Others, others have similar issues.
Yep. Yep.
Number five, consideration to approve the resignation request at the close of the 2122 school year.
This is for Ann Anderson. Uh, we do thank her for her service, uh, to the district and to the kids.
Look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Bill.
Seconded by Brenda.
No, Bill.
Bill.
Bill? Any other discussion? All in favor of the approval of Ann Anderson's resignation at the close of the school year? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. With gratitude for her years of service. Consideration to approve a resignation request effective April 4th, 2022.
Yes, this is for Steven Strauss in the head girls' basketball coach position.
Just for the coach position?
Yep, just for the head coach.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Brenda?
I'll second.
Seconded by Bill. Other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the resignation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve a leave request in accordance with teacher's master agreement, Article 10, leaves is absent, leaves of absence, section 10, childcare leave for the upcoming school year.
This is for Lindsay Bernardi, I recommend approval.
Motion to approve?
Make the motion to approve.
Rebecca?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brenda. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve a leave request in accordance with teacher's master agreement titled for Article 10, Leaves of Absence, Section 10, Childcare Leave, from May 23rd, 2022 to June 6th.
Uh, this is for Elaine Nelson and I recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Rebecca, on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Bill. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve a leave request in accordance with teacher's master agreement, Article 10, Leaves of Absence, Section 10, Childcare Leave, August 17th, 2022 to September 18th.
This is for Ariana Larson and I recommend approval.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Brenda on the approve? Rebecca on the second? Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. So let's, let's just be reminded of the Education Foundation Gala, which is, name that date again?
April 23rd, uh, Mill Street.
One of their big fundraisers, so if you can at all attend, please do. You see what's upcoming at subsequent meetings we have here, so please review. If you have any questions or concerns, take them through Lori or Jeff. So, I think that's closed for this evening. Does anyone wish to make a motion to adjourn?
I will make the motion to adjourn.
Rebecca on the motion, seconded by...
I'll second.
Brenda? Any other discussion? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed, we are adjourned.